Please, I have you ten to please.
Good evening.
This is the agenda of the regular board meeting. President, Board of Trustees, Brown, Allen Clark, Cook County. David Scott, 22nd, 2020. At this time, we would ask for a call to call.
Trustee Cap?
President.
Trustee Bonner? Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson? Trustee Claybrook?
I've done that for you. Well, we have the open session for the citizens. If you have something to say to the board, you will sign up and give your name. Give your comment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting, August 11.
So, the motion for by trustee Captain.
I think they're okay.
Is that what trustee?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer? Trustee Claybrook?
Now, we have a meeting. So, if you have anything to say to the board, you can have a statement to the rest of the board. Give us your comments. At this time, I would ask for motion to open the meeting to the public. So, for by trustee Claybrook, to open the meeting to the public. We have a session. Is that what trustee Garcia was pressing?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Motion to have meeting now to the public for public comment. Meeting now to the public for public comment. I'll ask for motion.
Wait, we got one.
You prepare it, honey.
It's a dog on Calhoun.
I'm sorry. Can I have please have her name?
Jacklin Cosby.
Name again.
It's a, I think that's a German Shepherd. A dog with a petting. And they come down 141st. And 141st Street.
And Ben.
What it's been. On the side of it, where that house is on the corner, they bring their dogs over there to use the bathroom. And one day, I stopped in my car. And I asked him, I said, you're not gonna pick that up? He said, tell Burnham to pick it up.
Do you know where he lives?
Yeah, he live on Calhoun. I don't know the exact house, but that's where we come from.
Okay, well, if you could possibly, uh...
Get his address?
Address.
I most certainly would.
And I tell you, we'll put a stop to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Another public comment. Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. My name is Carol Dill. One to you, Mr. Pope. Why when we had floods in May, did we not get any help on the east side of Burnham? You were there at five o'clock in the morning with another person. And it took three of us, the neighbor that you stood, that bought Annie's house way in the back, myself and one other person, to unclog five sewers on 138 under two foot of water. We got no help from the village whatsoever. The entire trailer park was underwater. And my second question is why does the trailer park not get any notices from the village? We pay taxes just like everybody else does. We got nothing on the water. I heard that everybody got blue tablets to put in their toilets. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, none of us got it. We've had no notices on the COVID-19 or any help that the village is offering. We've got no notices on when the city stickers and the license plate stickers are due. You make sure you pass them out on 138, but you sure don't pass them out in the trailer park. And I want to know why.
We were in the water, Dill, actually.
That's correct.
Right, yeah, we didn't do it in the water bills.
Well, we don't get a lot of it.
Okay, well, kind of that was an oversight, so that will be corrected.
Immediately, I hope.
Something about the flood down 138, please. I personally witnessed the workers coming around. I was one of the ones helping on clubs, also keeping up all the debris that was coming down into the sewers.
I was out there for four hours and I didn't see one city worker.
I, I saw him. I mean, we were out there, I was talking to everyone, they were working there.
Yeah, well, we didn't see him down at the end of 138.
Was that the day when the river, they did a backflow of the river and, and it back? Yeah, that was, it was overwhelming our sewer drain. That's what happened. It overwhelmed them.
There were five sewers that were completely clogged.
We literally...
People went out there and the water went right down.
We literally had fish in the streets.
Well, we didn't get the fish, but...
Well, well, you missed that. Well, we had a couple of streets that had fish. And so, the river had backflowed. They did a backflowing and the river backed into the streets. That's what happened. So, the drains are overwhelmed.
Are there other public comments? Mr. Shea? Are there other public comments? Mr. Shea at the back.
Uh, David Shea, 14112 Green Bay. Few years back, they closed US 30 drag strip in Indiana. What I wasn't aware of is they reopened it on Green Bay and Burnham Avenue on the east side of Burnham.
Amen.
And nightly, nightly, we have people flying down those streets. Burnham is probably worse than Green Bay, but in Green Bay, we got little kids playing there. And either the signs aren't bright red enough, the stop signs, because they go right through. I seen almost two deer T-boners almost got it. So, y'all can do something about that that might help, uh, save somebody's life. So, I just think you should bring that to, we should bring that to your attention.
Well, I appreciate it, 'cause it's the first I've heard of it.
I had actually talked to the chief. And that one part is a Trans Am or something, kind of gold color.
Do you know what he knew?
I don't know where he goes.
I know where some of the kids live that are going up and down that way. They're right down the street from us and we've mentioned it to them. And we do call the house, but by the time they get there, the kids already know we've called them. So, they, you know, they...
Yes, I'm John Hyden. I have a few short points. My first one is I was, uh, I was listening to one of the meetings recently and it was concerning videotaping these meetings. And Mr. Pope, you said you thought it was political. And I think you don't like that it's being done by that comment. Well, can I suggest to you that you could actually use that to your advantage? Somebody lies, lies about something you said in these meetings, you can go back and refer them to the actual recording so it can work to everybody's benefit. So, I'm suggesting it's not the positive, it's not for the Democrats, not for the Republicans. It's for the truth. It's for the truth. And can I also suggest that it actually got me coming to these meetings? Because December of 17, the first meeting I ever saw on YouTube, it's a meeting before I came to, there was an elderly woman, elderly man, their argument about the water rate increase. The lady and guy says, can we fight this? We're gonna fight this. That's the first time I ever heard your voice and you said you already lost. That's my whole point, but it could still be used positive in your, as far as you go. Uh, my second point here is clerk's office has been closed since, uh, since, since March or so. And I've been sending the clerk several emails in the last several weeks. I don't expect her to respond to this now, but the office is closed, they don't answer the phone for me. They sent, I get the busy tone, but I'm just wondering why she doesn't return emails? Also, I was wondering in particular why the clerk's office was closed? Because I've gone to the post office today, they're wide open. She told a neighbor of mine that Cal City is closed. Well, I called Lansing, Lansing's Water Department's open. Dalton's is open. The police window, I understand, Mayor, you're in charge of that, that's even open. That's 15 feet away from the window. That's why I'm wondering, why is it, I mean, the three women that work in there, we pay them. We pay them. I'm just wondering, why are they hiding behind the window? I got treated rather rudely yesterday and the lady wouldn't respond to me after a while. And I couldn't see her, so I couldn't do anything about it. So, I'm just trying to ask too, why is the clerk's office still closed at this point? Point number three is, Mayor, I, I asked you about a year ago, several meetings ago, about a quarterly financial report. And we have yet to see that. And trustee Cap, I know every meeting or every other meeting, he approves, he gets the approval to pay the monster bills. Can I ask, can we get a copy of what you do? That way we'll have some sort of an idea as residents that are concerned about it. What bills we do have and what bills are being paid. My fourth question, I wish Stanley was here tonight. I wonder why I got told, clerk Chavez told me about a year ago, we don't have a foyer, a backup foyer officer. That blew my mind. I thought it was a law. I don't know, but I thought it was a law. I was told that again two weeks ago from, uh, from the treasurer. We don't have a backup foyer officer, so I had to wait until she came back from late. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Jerry Hunter. For you, John, a foyer does not have to be answered by the foyer officer, it can be answered by anybody. In the last administration, when you would ask a question, you would just get an answer. You didn't have to go through a foyer report and make it some big ordeal. You could easily just answer a question and not even go through a foyer report or make a copy. Uh, the last time, if I bring anything up, I'd rather be answered by a trustee who's in charge of their department, whether it comes up, rather than Mr. Pope answering every single question. Last time I made a statement when I was here, I mentioned about community meetings, how community meetings were not being done. And I was wrong on that. They were being done all until the COVID came, so... Number two, I was wondering, the community gardeners out here, how's that paid for? Does that come out of, I know it's yours and Lucy's name is on the front. I was wondering if that comes out of your expense accounts or is that paid for by the village? And if it is paid for by the village, who, who reaps the benefits of the garden? Who gets to go in there and get the, uh, fruit or the apples or the tomato, I mean, tomatoes or the watermelons? I just went in there just to grab some, but I don't know how it gets distributed. Is it just whoever wants it, they come and get it? And why are your names on the front of it? Because usually a community garden has to do with people from the, somebody donates a piece of land and different people from the community plant their section of the garden and you all share it as a, as a group. This seems something a little bit different to me and I'm not quite sure exactly what it is. Also, if an official or employee is in violation of an ordinance that I know of, can a resident file a complaint? Um, are we able to file complaints with the police? But we know there's something on an ordinance that you're not following and it says there should be a fine? We as residents, are we able to take care of that? I guess if the village attorney was here, he might be able to answer, but since he's not here, I'm gonna keep researching and find that out. I guess last I met the Harvey guy that, uh, that we hired after my departure. If he, uh, is our waterworks superintendent, I didn't get an answer on that. Basically, you said that he did a lot for us and so we're gonna continue to keep him on and pay him. And, and, and putting it into a, I mean, basically, you didn't give me any other reason why we would keep that man when we have the same amount of labor here in our water department even more. We hired on an extra employee for that and hired, and bought additional vehicles. Also, my sewer, um, the four alleys where we live that is all residential, our sewers haven't been cleaned in, I know it's at least over 30 years, it could be 50 years. I don't know. The vaults are buried, the tops, he's gonna say no, but this is true. The vaults are buried in the middle of the alley, so no company is gonna come and grade those alleys. I have brought that up to Mr. Pope and he said, well, that those were buried over by the former administration. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean you shouldn't find them and raise them up to grade. So, my sewer can be cleaned, because when I have water coming in my basement when it rains, that could be because the sewers are getting filled up with water because of people's downspouts and the, and the sewers can't hold as much water because they haven't been cleaned. I'd also ask that, uh, the grading of the alleys creates just a whole bunch of dust. I, I don't know if all communities grade their alley once a month, but I know mine is graded once a month. And I can see the dust flying up because there's five or six landscaping companies that work within a residential area, which they're not supposed to, but when these things go up and down the alleys, all it does is create dust. My car gets full of it. I'm sure John has the same problem, he's just not gonna talk about it. When we're talking about the noise of the cars, John has to hear the cars with those, they're taking off their exhaust and then they, they floor it when they're going on Burnham Avenue. It's the loudest thing I've ever heard. It's constant. It's all, it's, it's all night, nobody's ever taken care of it. And the last thing, uh... The Harvey guy or the superintendent, I wanna know, is if he was responsible for the sewers? Who is responsible for the sewers? Does he have to file a monthly report that we can check and make sure that things that are supposed to be getting done are getting done? Because if we're paying somebody from another community to handle the administration part of our water department, there should be some kind of report that gets shown to the village officials. I mean, how, how do you know anything's being done at all besides just the mayor telling you? To me, the board should be on top of that, man. That's your jobs. To, to, to make sure that Public Works is giving a report and that can be checked. Water Department is giving a report and that can be checked. Sewers are getting a report that can be checked. To make sure that the backup engines are running, to make sure that they're tested, to make sure that the alarm systems are tested. All those things, you got no idea whether those things are being done. Because nobody has to file anything, there's no accountability. That's enough for me.
I take it enough public comment.
Oh, can I try one more quick thing? If you get contacted by the EPA regarding illegal dumping over by condos, just know that that's me. Because I did call them, because I'm tired of watching communities come and dump their shit in that area and us come with a payload or bury it. And, uh, that needs to stop. That's just how I talk.
Uh, yes, I wanna piggyback again on what the gentleman said on how all the neighboring townships clerk offices open and Burnham's is not.
Can I have her name, please, for the record?
Uh, my name is Dwight Young. He's, he's completely correct, I don't understand that. Initially, I wanna state for the record again, my issue is that I had my lawyer reach out to the clerk several times regarding my water bill and it's completely ignored. I actually did my, my own due diligence and the closing lawyer gave me the documents. There was no outstanding bill when I purchased the property seven years ago. I have a copy of the first water bill that I received, that was an estimate. And I'm still trying to figure out how I got a, a upcharge of $4,300 with all of these documents. And your office won't even talk to me at all. And I definitely feel as an owner and a taxpayer that I deserve some explanations and some documentations, which your office refuses to give me. Uh, I think one of the board members, I don't remember, said that they would reach out to me. She reached out one time and I haven't heard anything again. And again, the clerk's office, she just continues to ignore, uh, my attorney just completely, which is crazy. And there's an ordinance in the village, uh, in, in the village book that says that someone is supposed to come out. No one has ever contacted me to come out and, uh, do a reading. I've always turned in the yellow cards when you have the yellow cards. Um, I can't understand for the life of me how the bill was upcharged $4,300.
That is.
Because that is, that's the answer.
I'll ask for motion to close the meeting to the public. I'll ask for motion to close the meeting to the public.
No.
We have a motion to close the meeting to the public.
John? Trustee Claybrook, could you guys defend us?
Anybody?
When you trustees ask him, I'll be responsible. Is that asking so much, guys?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Cap? Yes. Trustee Bonner?
I have almost every deal from the department. I saved every one of them.
Still waiting for your trustees to...
I'll get your phone number after. Trustee Bonner? And talk to the brother. Trustee Bonner? Yes. Trustee Arthea? Trustee Greer?
I don't think you have a question. There wasn't a question.
I'm talking about having him respond.
Meeting is still going on.
This is the time to talk. Trustee Claybrook, this is the time to talk.
The meeting is still in session.
You closed the meeting for us, we pay your salaries.
You already made your comment, so I closed the meeting to the public. Then I, then now it's time for me to talk. Okay. We are going in reverse order. Uh, Mr. Young, uh, I do believe to the best of my recollection, the clerk has reached out to you. Now, as far as the...
No disrespect, but she's not reached out. All the things she's told me is to just pay the bill and be quiet. I am not a kid. That's all she's repeatedly told me.
As far as the, I mean, as far as the water usage goes, as far as the hiring goes, there was some meter that was not read for a long period of time. I mean, the clerk was not responsible for reading.
Right, neither am I.
Who was responsible?
Where's the documentation?
No, it was never my job, it was yours. You're the administrator that's supposed to make sure. Hold on, hold on. You're, you're the one who's supposed to make sure that the meter reader read the meters twice a year and so was Lucy. You guys, why, I was gone for a year and you guys actually just skipped reading meters. I've got an email showing you guys just decided to skip reading meters. I'll show it to Mr., Mr. Young.
So, um, then after we changed the meters, then of course, once we got the old readings, some of them were very hard. And that's why they were, so I'll admit it before and I'll admit again that our employees did not necessarily do the best job reading the bill. But I will admit that publicly.
Mayor Pope, they never read the meters. And in fact, the first and every building I had was an estimate. How could you upcharge me? How if you gave me an estimated bill, seven years later, you know that the meter was written wrong? How? What you're saying makes no sense. I have the proof. The bill is an estimate, the first bill is an estimate.
The closing lawyer gave me a document that shows that there was no outstanding bill.
Seven years later, you said that it's being read wrong. How?
Estimated bill because we didn't have the actual reading.
Right, so how did you have a reading eight years later?
I mean, because once Kevin said change the...
Right, so if they changed the system, then how did you get a, a actual reading? That makes no sense.
That's how we took the old meter out. It still was on there.
That's crazy. You never had an actual reading from the beginning, sir. If you gave me an estimated bill from the beginning, how do you ever know what the reading was? I have the closing documents.
It's an estimated bill because we don't know what it was.
Right, so if you never knew what the actual reading was, how could you upcharge me eight years later? Think about what you're saying.
Still use the water, that you still use it?
You never had an actual reading from the beginning, Mayor.
But you still use it though.
I understand that, but you never had a reading from the beginning. You never had an actual reading from the beginning. Do you understand what you're saying? You never had a reading from the beginning.
I don't know about that.
I got the proof.
We have a reading from the beginning and we have a...
So, why won't you give it to me or my lawyer then?
Take the ending, subtract it from the original, whatever is the total, subtract it with what you've billed already is the difference.
And so, I deserve a copy of that and we can't get a copy of that?
And I have already provided to you with an email.
You definitely didn't. I wouldn't be sitting here wasting my time.
Okay. Okay, Jared, uh, you were complaining about the sewers. That was part of your job when you was working here.
Oh, come on.
That was in with the sewer. That was part of your job when you were working here.
You refused to have the public works dig them up. You said it right now.
He's been gone for three years, sir.
Yeah, I'm not talking to you.
Right, I've been gone for three years. You're right.
That was part of your job and that was added to you when you... And that was added to you when you became full-time. Because I never would have made your job full-time.
Don't go into that. Don't go, don't go into that.
That is one of the, that is one of the, that's a classic one of two, because that is true and you know it and that is it.
Yeah, I, I know.
John, you, um, you had submitted a question, I don't remember what all over, but you was talking about the real video or something.
No. I simply suggested it's not politically, it's not political. It favors everybody, including you. Use it to your advantage as well.
I mean, the point I made about that was that you said, or either Jared said, that I should give the young lady praises for taking the meeting.
Just let the residents know, that's all.
And I said it was done for political reasons, that's what I said.
What, what's the political reason? What's the political reason, Mayor? I don't understand that.
And as far as things being on tape and people denying it, all you gotta do is look at the sheet every day, you see that every day. And somebody got some...
You have a reporting to bank up what you said, though, that's my point. That's a good thing for you, too. What about the quarterly financial report? You told us you give us one and John suggested you can get, he does it every month, which we know. Why can't you just give us what he, this way we'll have an idea what bills Burnham has and what's being paid? It's that simple.
John is front of the table, so he can talk to you.
So, I do see him every month and everything is being paid.
Can we have a copy of what you see? That's all I'm asking, clerk.
But we don't really have a quarterly one.
No, 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 just give us a copy of what you do.
A monthly one. Quite large.
Just give us a copy of what you do, a monthly one.
It's quite large, too.
Okay. It's better what we're getting now?
So, did the village pay for the community garden or did your expense come back?
Mayor, what about the backup foyer officer?
Actually, at one time, that was me. I took all the training, so I don't know how I fell off, but I was...
I don't think there's anything in this section that I'm aware of that says you have to have a backup printing officer. So, it's the fact that once the foyer request is put in, if it cannot be granted within that five-day period, then the town of Minnesota Paladins asked for, uh...
I, I didn't hear back from them, that's why I wasn't there. I, I didn't hear back from the clerk's office, so I had to go back in there. And it's closed off. I was talking to her and all of a sudden she stopped talking and I, and it's closed, so you can't talk to her.
But as far as being closed, why don't you call the governor's office? He's the one that handed the mandate down.
A lot of the, a lot of the neighboring communities are closed. I know of a few that are closed.
I know Lansing and Dalton are open.
Just calcin.
We're, we're in Burnham, exactly. We're paying to break out why you're not in there.
Do you know why we down here, it's gotta be in that mother's home?
I didn't understand you.
I said, do you know why we meeting down here right now? I mean, it's better than that home.
Possibly political? Is that building?
All right, thank you, brother, for your kind of...
Mayor Pope, why do you have the police window open?
I mean, thank you, um...
No, I'm asking you, why do you have the police window open and not the clerk?
Hey, what about my answer?
I mean, I like to say that, uh, I'm glad everyone came, you're always welcome. And, uh, I think I did announce to you, Ms. Carol.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
Okay, as far as the, uh, as far as the tablets go, that you will get them. And if anyone else didn't get them, then we'll make sure we get them to you. And we did send them, everybody, we sent them, but we put them in the water bill. And I think your water bill is on the trailer cricket's one bill. Right, so if that's no problem, we can take care of that.
Won't get faith in your trustees.
The police, I contact the police probably more than anyone in our community. And I've called about the speeders on Green Bay, the speeders on Mackinac, the speeders on Burnham Avenue. I have called, so it's not like we're not calling and we're not noticing. The sewers in my alley are bad and the manholes are covered. I've had Cal City plumbing out and we couldn't find it.
John, I can find it in 30 minutes. You guys need my help? I'll find it for you.
He needed you that day.
I got him on a reflector, I'll find him.
So, I've, and I've had trouble in my house when it rains also because of the sewers.
We have cleaned the sewer, we have not cleaned them.
No, one down the alley, I don't think by us.
You have no idea what's been cleaned, because I have the records.
Yeah, ours is...
How's that?
Yeah, but you were responsible.
I have the records.
Right, you didn't do them. Yeah, you should have the records. Oh, you didn't do the... Yes, I would like to announce that the COVID-19 cases for the village of Burnham is up to 173 on record. But the, uh, but actually, a community of Burnham only has six to eight cases. So, part of the other figure is not involved in the community per se about them. So, um, the census report is, uh, is due at the end of this month, so we had 62.5. So, hopefully, people will, I mean, go in and sign up for that, you know, so we can get our funds up. The last time we was at 70.1 and now we at 62.5, so we down, we need to get that up. And the state of Idaho is 99.8. 99.8 in village of Brown is 62.5. The state of Illinois is 70.5.
Why do you think? A Republican state?
You've already had your time. I mean, tree trimming will start within a couple of weeks. We've got some tree trimming scheduled, we've got some street patching and we've got some sidewalk repairs to do that we will get done. and we've got some sidewalk repairs to do that will get done. We got a street patching on Mackinac, we have a street patching on, I believe, Green Bay, maybe not Green Bay this time, one hundred and thirty eighth street, we've got a sidewalk repair, we've got several repairs on Cabo. In other words, throughout the village. Now, we could not do all of them, but we don't have enough money to do that, so... But we will continue to do that every year, get all of them done, get them to get all of them done. So, and on October the tenth, we will have an electronic day, and then we get community services, we run the television, television computers or whatever you got here. And we're gonna have a COVID-19 testing day, and we will also give our mask on that day, and trustee Greer will...
Are you gonna pass out flyers to let all residents know?
I will make sure that you get yours, Ms. Carroll. I'll make sure. Okay, that's all I had on the... At this time, I mean, when Chief Powell come up, he will come. Good evening, everybody.
So, I think this year has been physically and mentally challenging for everybody. But anytime you have anything positive, you say it loud, show it proud. So, George Daphnis, can you come to the front, please? So, two little presentations for you. First, on behalf of Mayor Polk, trustee Greer, our village clerk, Lou Chavez, our entire board, the fire department, and the police department, and the entire community, we want to thank you for your thirty years of dedicated service to the village of Burnham. I heard a story about this plaque, and Corey's been, Lieutenant Daphnis can back me up on this plaque. Can you take down your mask for a quick sec? See that mustache? Now, we called a couple places, and they, finally we got to one place, and we said, I need a bronze with a mustache. Gotta have it. We've done that in like decades. I said, can you at least look? I said, can you at least look? They're like, well, look, but I doubt it. So, they go back, about ten minutes later, we get back on the phone, and they go, you won't believe this, in a dusty old box, we found our last one, and it's never gonna be made again. And finally, when it comes to being a firefighter, three things George has shown over the years. To put others before himself, to dedicate himself every day to the fire department, and always show a positive influence to not only the firefighters, but to the community. So, in your honor, George, forever on the Burnham Fire Department, there will always be a George Daphnis Firefighter of the Year award. And the fire player that shows those qualities every year, like George has all these years, will be voted on and at the Christmas party awarded a medal, and their name put on this plaque. So, I think it was a pretty easy choice this year to give George Daphnis the Firefighter of the Year.
Okay, on the recycle day, which is gonna be October the tenth, that's on Saturday, you write your television, your computers, laptops are going away. We'll have a dumpster here. It'll probably be like, I said, about eight to three, something like, it may be even seven to three at times. So, we didn't set the exact time yet, but it'll be out there early, just if you want to come and throw those items in there, because we cannot throw television in the alley, because homework will not pick those up. And COVID-19 trustee Greer, she'll touch on that. And the last thing I would like to say, I mean, for the record, for the record, village of Burnham is going okay. The village of Burnham is going okay. I don't care what anybody else tells you. I don't care what anybody else tells you. And the village of Burnham, right now, is making more progress than it has in a hundred and thirteen-year history. That is for the record. And there's some things I haven't announced yet. And I don't put everything out in one. There's a lot of information that I have that's not... Question there.
Good evening, everyone. Early voting, according to the Cook County Clerk's Office, is at Calumet City Library, beginning October nineteenth through November seventh. Also, you can visit our website for any flyers or any information that you need to see, that you need more information regarding, the flyers that have gone on in the utility billing, regarding how to get your stickers, regarding how to do the electronic waste. It has lots of information which are posted on our website. You just need to go to villageofburnham.com.
Most of the seniors don't have computers.
Also, sign up for, there's a code red. There's a code, excuse me, there's a code red that you can go to our website, sign up for the code red, so you can get the alerts in case there's a oil order, there's a water main break, and you get an oil order, or some kind of a disaster, or something is going on in the village of Burnham, and you can receive that. So please, residents, sign up, go to our website, and go to the code red and sign up.
And you can sign up through email, text message, your choice of how you wanna sign up for it.
And we have a date. We're going to open the community center for sticker selling on September twenty-eighth, the twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth. Times will be posted, we'll let you know, but right now, both of the three dates, we don't know what time will be opened through here at the community center. You would need to bring your vehicle registration in order to purchase your vehicle sticker. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Is it also gonna be open for registering to vote?
That you have to do it with the Cook County Clerk's Office. You can also...
Is there a website that we can do it on here?
No, on the Cook County Clerk's website, you have to, in order to register to vote. You can't do it on the village's website.
And you can also register to vote the same day you voted.
And that's all I have.
Good evening, everyone. COVID-19 testing will be held this Saturday here at the community center. The timing will be from ten to three, and also will be a mass giveaway. So, this Saturday from ten to three, come out ones who didn't get their testing done. Feel free to come out to get that done here at the community center. Patching every Wednesday starting at nine thirty to four. For those who need assistance, the location is one fifty-three forty South Page Street, Harvey, Illinois. Senior lunches carry out on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from eleven to twelve thirty. Location, fourteen twenty Huntington Drive, Yolmene Street. Senior lunches are also served at the Riverdale Senior Center on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from ten to one P.M. A reminder, dog walkers must clean up their pets' waste and have a current pet tag. Citation will be issued for non-compliance. Dog waste is endangered, healthy, and children, it transmits diseases, and it values our village. Starting January the first, twenty twenty-one, every child born or adopted in the state of Illinois will get fifty dollars deposited in their college savings account on their five twenty-nine plan. Condolences to the Supreme Court Justice, Associate Justice of the Supreme Court of the United States. President Clinton nominated her on June the fourth, nineteen ninety-three, and she served since August the tenth. She started serving August the tenth, nineteen ninety-three. Her life was made, her life has made this world better. She was a voice of justice and equality. Condolences to the family and to the Supreme Court family, Mrs. Ruth Badger in Jamesburg. And just a reminder, as you know, two hundred thousand deaths has been because of the coronavirus. So stay safe, wear your mask, and maintain your physical distance. People are taking, this virus is very likely, but it's very serious. The coronavirus does not care about us. So stay safe, wear your mask, maintain your physical distance, and wash your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for every point. So in the future, in the future, if anyone comes in and leave without a mask, you'll be asked to leave. You'll have to put a mask on. So from this day forward, everybody, if you come in without a mask, you'll be asked to leave. If you need one, we can give you one, but you will not be able to sit in the meeting without a mask. From this day forward. Okay, thank you, trustee Greer, for helping post public works in Billings, trustee Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the collective bargaining agreement between village of Burnham and Timsers Local Seven Hundred Public Works Department from May first, twenty twenty, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I make a motion to the board. I make a motion to approve on the collective bargaining agreement between village of Burnham and Timsers Local Seven Hundred Public Works Department from May first, twenty twenty, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And the motion of both by trustee Greer, to approve collective bargaining agreement, we need a second, please?
I'll second it.
Second, our trustee Campbell, cut that to the room.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Another thing I have, Public Works is out doing general cleaning. And Jerry?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the legal dumping everywhere, and I also hate that. I hate the legal dumping, but it's hard. We have to catch offenders coming in doing it. And I don't know, that's what we have to do, we have to enforce maybe a different control or something like that, just for pride. You know, I mean, and that's the only way to solve the problem, is to catch offenders doing it.
Yeah, I call all the time, but...
Can you put a dam over there?
I'm talking about throughout the village, it's not just one.
What I'm saying is, when somebody dumps there, it's not getting taken to the dump, we're just sparing it. You can't really bury that stuff like that.
Discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve the most bidder for the project of CDBG number one five oh seven dash zero nine nine. Project number one five dash five seven six point oh oh one, one hundred and forty-fifth Street Water Main Extension. Bits were reviewed at the September fifteenth, twenty twenty, advertised bid opening for one hundred and forty-fifth Street Water Main Extension. All the bits were correct and in order. H Linden and Sans Sewer and Water. Two hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four. Dairy Sink, two hundred sixty-eight thousand. GS Plumbing, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, ninety-six. Kellman City Plumbing, three hundred seventy thousand, three sixty-seven.
That's a nation, where you get up and give the board and the public, well, you know, exactly what they're talking about and how it's gonna be.
Yes, some of you might remember, I announced a few months ago that we were awarded funding from CDBG, from Cook County, on this project, but it actually goes back further than this. This is something that we've had planned for a while. We did a water study of the west side of the village, and it was determined that the flows were low because there was only a six-inch, a single six-inch line that serves kind of the whole quadrant where village hall is, so between Torrance and Alice, and then between State and the railroad tracks. So, we did some modeling, and we determined that an additional twelve-inch parallel line on the other block would improve those flows for everybody in that area, so the fire flows will improve. You know, during demand, if a bunch of people are watering, you know, you're not gonna see that pressure dip that you saw before. And probably the best benefit is, is now you have two connections to the main line on Torrance. So if that six-inch were to fail, that could be isolated, and the whole, the eight blocks or whatever that is, is not gonna be without water. So, we had that designed, and we were actively looking for funding, and the mayor was able to get Cook County to, they had some surplus CDBG funds, and they awarded that to the village, so we went to bid. And these are the bid results, so we're asking the board to award this contract.
And I would like to say, again, thank you, I would like to share that, again, I was just at the company, I was at the right meeting at the right time, and spoke to some people that were there, and everything that they were talking about, it sounded like something that could help Burnham. I said, ooh, maybe look into this. So we meet a lot, and I spoke to appropriate people, and the rest of it's history, so... And this is the largest, I mean, CDBG grant we've gotten from the village of Burnham since I've been there. This is the largest. So this is good for the town, so thank you.
Bring those drawings, or a rendering of those drawings?
No, I did not. I can email them to the mayor, and he can distribute them.
Okay, Dave, thank you. You had another question? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to...
We can motion to accept the most bid from project CDBG number one five oh seven dash zero nine nine, and project four five dash five seven six point oh one, one hundred and forty-fifth Street Water Main Extension. The bid will be due at the September fifteenth, twenty twenty, advertised bid opening for the one hundred and forty-fifth Street Water Main Extension. So the bid, the most bid is H Linden and Sans Sewer and Water.
I'll second the motion. Most major trust in our field, second by trustee Campbell, we want the most bid for two hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four thousand. I mean, it's a huge winner, it's solid score.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. And your head of day, what do you think they made you spell it?
Well, knowledge is awarded, we'll send it to the county tomorrow and get their sign-off on it, so figure two weeks, the contracts turned around, pre-construction meeting, order materials, I'd say, three or four weeks from now. And there is the completion date in the contract, is, I think they have to have it operational by November first, so definitely will be done this year.
I'd like to see justice, yes.
Discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve and honestly the lowest bidder for the project of MFT section twenty-one dash zero 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 dash zero one, GM project number twenty-one, R zero zero one six point oh one, twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one, MFT concrete replacement program. This will review at the September fifteenth, twenty twenty, advertised bid opening for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, MFT concrete replacement program. All the bits were correct and in order, and the bid is as follow. J and J Newell Concrete Contractors, eight two thousand forty-two, Davis Concrete Construction Company, one hundred twelve thousand three thirty-three.
What is your such a big difference in the bids that we...
I would say that in this particular project, JJ Newell being located, you know, right there, probably had a good advantage over Davis, who I think they're in Tinley Park or something, so it's just a mobilization. Now, Davis is actually a Moni, so... Uh, that, Davis is actually in Moni, so it has to do with, they're closer.
So, make a motion to approve the lowest bidder for the project of MFT section twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero dash zero-one, GM, project number twenty-one dash R zero-zero-one-six point oh-one, twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one, MFT Concrete Replacement Program. The bids were reviewed at the September fifteenth, twenty-twenty advertised bid opening, and the lowest bid is J.J. Newell Concrete Contractors for eighty-two thousand forty-two.
I'll second it, Moni. I'll try to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. I'm also, uh, see, Trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the lowest bidder for the project of MFT section twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero dash oh-two, dash GM, project number twenty-one, dash R zero-zero-one-six point oh-two, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, MFT Pavement Patching Program. Bids were reviewed at the September fifteenth, twenty-twenty advertised bid opening for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, MFT Pavement Patching Program. Uh, the bids are as follows. Deconstruction Inc., eighty-one thousand nine seventy-eight point two-four, and Governor Aschols, one hundred three thousand eight hundred six point four-four. So, make a motion to accept the lowest bidder for the project, MFT section twenty-one. Zero-zero-zero-zero-zero dash oh-two, dash GM, project number twenty-one, dash R zero-zero-one-six point oh-two, twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one, MFT Pavement Patching Program. And the bid is Deconstruction Inc. for eighty-one thousand nine seventy-eight point two-four.
I'll second it, let's take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you, and, uh, I see, this is some patchwork on the Maginot, on the forty-first, Mag, uh, forty-seventh and Maginot, and one hundred thirty ninth and Hoxton, and one hundred and fourth and Torrance, between, uh, between Torrance and, uh, and Hoxton, and also some patchwork on one hundred forty-third, one hundred forty-seventh and Madison. There's some other areas on this giving, you know, going over here, so, thanks again. I'll see, Trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of...
Yes, Dana. Yes, Dana.
Paragraph four, right in the middle of the page, there's a typo, or it should be law, not blow off.
Yes, we got that.
Okay, yeah, we got it, okay.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve ordinance number twenty-twenty dash O, dash zero-zero-four, in ordinance creating auxiliary police officers and amending chapter fifty, law enforcement article two, police department, section sixty-one, and section sixty-two dash eighty of the Code of Ordinances, Village of Burnham.
Okay, are there any questions, the members from the board? Any questions? Open to see.
So, make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty dash O dash zero-zero-four, in ordinance creating auxiliary police officers and amending chapter fifty, law enforcement article two, police department, section sixty-one, and section sixty-two dash eighty of the Code of Ordinances, Village of Burnham.
This will give us some extra assistance to, in the police department, to, uh, you know, handle that situation, so we don't, we can use these officers, we can do traffic control, you know, tie, let the officer that can be doing something else, so, um, we have to get, uh, home repairs, some unrests, things that could happen, so we gotta make sure that we protect the citizens, the property of the village, so... I'll proceed to...
Discussion of...
Should be on the main motion. We need a second.
Yeah, two second, okay. Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Thank you, most of the time, see, Trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the Resolution twenty-twenty R dash zero-one-two, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement to apply for a coronavirus relief fund between the Village of Burnham and the county of Cook County, Illinois, a body politic and corporate of the state of Illinois.
Any questions, go ahead.
The county may try to assist us with some funding or reimbursement, you know, so, you know, we'll see if it happens.
So, make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty dash R dash zero-one-two, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement to apply for a coronavirus relief fund between the Village of Burnham and the county of Cook County, a body politic and corporate of the state of Illinois.
Motion, over, Trustee Garcia. Second, that, Trustee Claybrook, you can take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Thank you, most proud, glad, most trusted.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the Resolution twenty-twenty dash R dash zero-one-three, a resolution approving and adopting the update of the Cook County Multi-Europeneal Defense mitigation plan.
Okay, Dana, would you mind explaining that, about the mitigation plan as to whether we have a local business department?
Very briefly, every five years, we've been participating in this plan for almost ten years now, or more, and every five years, it has to be updated and, uh, by one resolution, that re-adapting, uh, helping, and so allows, uh, the village participating, the town flash, over them, for mitigating, uh, the answers, uh, the answers that they occur within the village, uh, its assistance, the mentality funding, or reinforcement. So, uh, there's a hundred and twenty-one communities that are participating in this program. And Burnham's just wonderful, and we have, uh, this, uh, representative, and I think, and the county, by Thursday, so that, uh, we can still participate for the next five years. So, there's a, a major disaster, burn disaster, uh, and first, and our children, and so, uh, so, uh, something that, uh, is, uh, required to continue to participate in the plan, so...
Okay. Does anybody have an important question? Any questions? I'll see them.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty dash R dash zero-one-three, a resolution approving and...
I'll second, thank you. Motion, over, Trustee Garcia, and the second, by Trustee Cap, let's try to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Motion, pass, Trustee Cap?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills and last month's bills. I'd like to make a motion that, uh, approve the authorization of payment of this month's bills.
A second. Make a motion, Trustee Garcia.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
I mean, Garcia? Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Thank you, most proud. That's all I have. Yeah, I can trust you, Cap. I'll tell you something, Trustee, we still have ideas. Our preparation, I'm proud.
No report.
Thank you. Please tell the politicians, uh, on communication, on roads, in restaurants, is there any unfinished business? Uh, any new business? Well, before we adjourn, uh, I would like to say, I'm hoping that, that we'll be able to announce, uh, a project, a plan that will be very beneficial to the residents of Burnham. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to announce that before November the tenth, November the tenth. So, there'll be a first meeting in November, if we get lucky, we might be able to make the note, hold in, but, uh...
Can you do the quote?
It will be very helpful, and it will be very beneficial to the residents of Burnham. At this time, I'll add my motion to, uh, move you here. I love you. I'll second it. We can take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, being adjourned, thanks for coming.